What do you do?
They're just getting stuff ready. They're just getting stuff ready.
It's like a possible.
From how much?
They're way up.
Yeah, yeah.
Little by little by little. What were you doing?
We were talking about getting kids through the sale can so they can participate in the sailing program. If they don't have transportation available. I was remarking that when our boys were in sales camp. Karen would, we lived in Penfield, Karen would take them up to Palmyra. Put them on the Watts bus and they were winding their way up through, through Wayne County. The bus driver would get here at the point. Okay, guys, get out.
I thought you were gonna be zooming in.
No, I told you I was gonna be here.
All right. I'm just so useful.
Thank you. Hey Kathy.
Hi Bill. Hi Bill.
Hello.
Did you need, how's your arm doing?
Uh, it's pretty much back to normal.
Oh, that's good.
So I'll just build up the strength from this one arm that was in the cast for so long.
Uh huh.
Now the cast, I mean.
Swing, yeah.
Freezing yet Kathy or?
Actually, it wasn't that warm in Florida, so it got to be forty degrees. I maybe just started warming up now. So it's.
I know my son's in Pensacola, may get cold like that, but.
Yeah, it's been bad weather. It's been windy and raining and. So. Beautiful weather here.
Well, a week ago Saturday, it wasn't too pretty.
Thursday morning might be too hot.
Yeah, of this week, yes.
We have more snow in March than we did in January and February.
I hope so, yeah. But that's not uncommon, so.
Yeah. Are we supposed to hit a storm?
Yeah.
So we are.
Supposed to start raining tomorrow and then turn cold.
I don't.
Thursday, Friday.
I'll take the snow as long as it's not freezing rain.
I'd rather have snow and rain.
I don't know about that. I don't like, I can drive in snow, but.
Yeah, ice.
Don't matter how good your eyes. Okay. Do you have a new there? Don't have anybody, not even the applicants. Kevin's not picking up either. Hey, uh. I, we have nobody. There's.
We got others.
We got people as well, but. Okay, because Goss is just joined, so I know it's working. All right, bye. Hello, Mark.
You are muted, Mark.
Uh, hello, oh.
That's a lot better.
So how's the weather there?
Oh, sunny and nice.
It's fairly nice here today.
Yeah. If we could have another day like this next Monday.
Yeah.
It'd be a big success.
Yeah.
You're gonna be in Rhode Island for, if that's right?
I, I think so. I'm not, I didn't want to be.
Hey, Mark. Do you want me to move your garbage can recycling closer to your house?
Oh, yeah, I meant to ask my neighbor to do that.
Okay.
You did it or did?
No, I, I, I can do it on my way home.
I appreciate it very much.
So Miss Wood?
Hello, how are you? Evening.
Very well, good going here. Hopefully Mr. Gilbert will join us also. Well, no, he won't be, his contractor will. He's on a cruise. Okay, now we go to Scotty. It must be the contractor. All right, it's seven o'clock. It's time to get started. All right, we'll start by having the members introduce themselves and since Kathy's back, we'll start with her.
Candy Brown.
Yo, Kenley.
Linda Youngman.
Bruce Eymann.
Janine Fogarty.
And Bill McKee.
Okay, we did have the meeting advertised in the wing time and it was posted on the village website. So we're gonna start, if we could. Uh, we do have a forum. If we take a minute, look at the minutes over, if you haven't already done so. If there's any changes that need to be made, please. Suggest a note.
I move we accept the minutes as the minute.
Oh, second here. Okay. Uh, do you know who you will?
I vote yes.
Yes.
Do you have a?
I can't vote. I wasn't real, I was on Zoom, so I wasn't a participant.
Yes.
And I'm, yes, until you manage with Kathy. Okay. Kevin. Kevin?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, do we have the contractor for Mr. Gilbert online?
I think that's who Matt's phone is. I think that's Matt Nowak.
Yeah, Matt, if that's you, please unmute yourself. Yeah, Kevin, can you help him?
I'm not able to. You're able to right there. If you hover over his name and say unmute, you're able to unmute him.
No, I'm not.
And so three dots in the upper corner say unmute.
Yeah, ask to unmute.
All right.
Right, there I am. Okay, there I am. Sorry about that.
All right. If you could walk us through what the Gilbert's are seeking to do?
Uh, they wanna build a two-story, uh, like, well, they wanna attach to their current deck, actually step down. And then have a second floor over the top of that step-down area. So that they can see the lake a little better going on the second, it's almost like a two-tiered deck.
And so kind of like a balcony, don't know if it's the second story?
Yes, I believe, I, I think that's what you said, second story, yes. And, and I don't think if, you know, by looking at the situation, I don't think it's obstructing anybody's view. Um, on the houses that are to the west of them, on the other street, stone. Stone Road, or I forgot the name of that road, but the, I don't think any of the people have any obstruction. Uh, with where they are and, and whoever possibly builds to the south of them, I don't think will ever even have an obstruction there as well.
Leave, assuming that the patio is a step down from the deck and that runs all the way to the frame shed?
Um, I, I don't think it made it that far. I don't have my notes with me right now. Um, I apologize. I could try to look it up, but um. I don't have all that, but yeah, it's probably gonna run pretty close to that shed. Yeah, that's right. We're gonna be over the top of that shed with the second floor balcony or deck.
Not according to the drawing.
Let me just get to my email.
Yeah, well, assuming that's a concrete patio going in.
Correct, correct. But then the, uh, the upper one is gonna be kinda like just to this peak of the shed. Gonna kinda like cover, if I remember right, it's gonna cover the shed, the center peak. No?
Not on the drawings we have before.
Okay, hang on a second. Let me just get the looks here. Hang on one. So here's the lower part, it's 265 square feet. And then the upper part, if I remember right, when him and I were talking, we were gonna kinda bring that upper deck just to the peak of that shed. To the actual center peak of the shed so that the water would shut off on the other side. Um, so he's got it nineteen feet. But I see what you guys are saying. It shows it to the base of the one side of that shed.
Looks like three.
Yeah, he's got like three feet somewhere. But it looks a little, it doesn't look balanced, so some, I, I'm kinda like a little bit over the shed, it looks like.
Okay, so the patio, the lower patio is gonna have a roof over?
The patio is gonna have the two, uh, the two, uh, the second floor deck. And that will be, um, we're gonna try to get the water, the shed away, so it'll be covered, yes, that patio.
Okay, I'm confused.
So it's, so you have, you have your concrete that's separate from?
That's the lower, that's the lower patio, that's the lower patio.
That's what I was asking, now there's a lower patio.
But then the second deck is gonna be the covering for the patio.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I'm having a hard time hearing you, so I, I don't know what's going on here.
Right, and then.
Yeah, we're just trying to figure it out, Matt. Uh, where are there gonna be two levels?
There's gonna be exact things on the second story.
Well, the lower level is the first level and that's a couple steps down from the current deck. And then the next level, you can see the stairs that are drawn, uh, that brings us up to the second floor area, I, I would call it, a second floor above the lower level. And that's, that's coming up the stairs, see the little stairs there?
It's not attached to the house.
I think I do, yes.
So, yeah. So they're gonna bring it, bring them upstairs to the top and they're, you know, they're gonna do like a glass railing around the top, so they can look out and see the lake.
So the upper deck is not attached to the house?
No, well, it's.
That's right, over the pad.
Yeah, it's atta, it's attached to the, it's attached to the upper, the other deck. You know, the, the original deck that's there, but no, it is not attached to the actual house, no.
Okay, I couldn't make that out from the drawings.
Oh, okay.
Is it gonna be attached to the frame shed?
Uh, no, no. It'll, it'll be near it, but it won't be attached, no.
So I'm, I'm still confused. As you come out to the east, starting at the, at the front face of the frame shed, Matt.
Okay.
There, there appears to be a three and a half foot rectangle, um, three and a half feet by fourteen feet rectangle. What, what does that represent?
Uh, honestly, I can't, uh, say I know what that represents, maybe a I mean, I, I, I was talking to Rick about this very briefly, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. That must, it looks like a space.
If I can clarify that for you, that's the overhang of the deck over the roof of the shed. That's, that's what Matt was saying.
That's what I was trying to say, yeah, so that was, that's, so that line that goes across there is basically the ridge line of the, the shed, so the shed is that whole box with that line going through the middle of it, where it says frame shed. And that's probably where it's a little confusing, um, is that the upper part, the upper deck is gonna hang over to that point. Um, oh, see where it says just below shed? There's that line?
Yes.
That's the upper deck basically going to there, right, right Kevin?
Yeah, the second story deck is two and a half feet longer than the concrete patio.
Correct, and it goes over the top of the, over top of the shed.
Yes, correct. So it's a little confusing. I see what you guys are saying, yes.
If you look at the shed on the other, on the next page, you can see that it's larger.
Yes, so that basically that center line, we're just underneath where it says shed, that is where the upper deck is gonna stop. Cause he wanted to go over the top of that little shed.
Then is that portion of the upper deck covered, Matt, or is that open?
That, so where, where it says shed? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, that part is.
The entire upper deck, okay, we, I think we've established that, starting with that line underneath the word shed, that represents the, the, the footprint of the upper deck. So my question is, is there, is there some sort of a covering over that upper deck? Or is that simply a flat deck and it's exposed to the elements?
Yeah, there's no roof. There's no roof on top of that, yes.
You were saying something before about water shedding, so.
Well, it was just, it was, we were gonna shed the water, so on the, on the upper deck, that, so you can go down below, we're gonna shed the water, you know, away, you know, in that depth, it's gonna be shedding away with, uh, you know, shed, like a deck system that can shed the water, so when you're underneath, you're not getting wet. That's all I meant, not, not a cover, not a, a third cover, you know, on top of that, you know, like another roof, no.
And then, and then that, uh, that narrow area with all the lines, that's, that's a stairway that goes then from the lower.
Yeah, those are, those are all the steps, yes, those mean steps. And then that spot that has, you know, when you get to the end of those little steps things, that area there is like a landing up top, so you got enough room to turn to get in onto that second floor deck area. So you walk to the land and then you walk straight down the steps.
So the upper deck uh, adjacent to the house and the upper deck, I'll call it, uh, out in their direction of the frame shed up, are both at the same level?
Yes, that, that whole area is at the same level, yes. It'll probably be just above the top of the peak of that shed. That's what we'll end up.
What's the height of this?
Oh, I don't know offhand. I mean, I'm thinking no more than probably nine feet or so. I'm, I'm thinking that's not much taller than that, that little shed.
So it's four, ten foot overall?
Is that what you guys, yeah. Like I said, I, I met with him briefly on this and then, uh, he was on vacation and uh, he wanted me to kinda, we didn't, we've made the disappointment with you guys quicker than we anticipated, but, um, so I'm fairly new to this myself, but I, I, I've got the gist of what's going on. But there's no, on top of this second floor deck, there's no covered second floor deck. It's just the lower part that's covered from the second floor deck. And there'll be like a glass railing around it. Um, I guess that's what they're gonna do, is like a glass railing around, so where it says a nineteen-foot area. And then, uh, that will be the glass railing area. And then the other one coming, uh, I would say from north to south, that will be covered, uh, with glass for railing.
I think I'm still confused then is, so is there a second level of deck in that area off to the front point of the house?
No, just this little, this, this area that we're building that comes up the steps, that's the second floor. That's the only area, that second floor, not, not, not across the front of the house is what you're saying, no.
Yes, yeah, that, that's what I was saying, okay.
Yeah, that, that deck stays the same. We're just adding this part here on.
Okay.
Kevin, do you have the specs on all this?
Meaning the dimensions for lumber, dimensions for buildout?
Yeah.
Uh, that comes once we know if this is, uh, approved or not for preliminary. Once I know what they get approved for, then Matt and I will work to get dimensions for everything.
Well, like if you see the, for the concrete slab, you see where those little boxes are? We will fill those little boxes like four feet down or forty-two inches down. And then pour the whole slab together, is like a monolithic slab, to support all this. And then those posts will, uh, be like six by six posts to support the second floor deck. And then we'll do, uh, I would imagine two by tens will be my floor system. And then whatever decking of their choice will be the decking.
So we'll need all that in writing, uh, Kevin says, uh, he'll get that from you before we give a final.
Oh, yeah, oh, without a doubt, yes, yep. And I think the way the house is positioned, I don't think anybody from the south will even really see this thing. Does he see the angle of the house? Really not even gonna see it. They're gonna see the shed more than anything.
Uh, Matt, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, so you're looking for variance relief on, um, the side setback in the coverage. Is there any reasoning for those?
You mean like the hardship?
Yes.
Um, I just, I mean, this is what they would prefer to do, there's no other area, if you tried to put a second floor on top of the current deck that's there, you'd block the windows that are inside the house and it wouldn't really work all that well, um, so like their hardship. I would say is that, uh, they just don't have the room to do exactly what they wanna do, and that's why they're requesting the, uh, the variance. And like I said, I, I don't believe anybody to the south, if you look at the angle of the home, will even really even see this, uh, two-story, uh, deck.
You know, Matt, is that, is that, uh, small frame shed that's there, is, is that is, is that, um, built into the ground? Is that, is that, uh, is that a pole shed or is that a, something that was just?
It's just set there, yeah, it's just set there, yeah, it's just set there.
So in the grand scheme of things, one could pick up that shed and, and move it a bit south and, and um, that, that distance between, that, that hardship distance between the, uh, northern boundary of property boundary, the, the six feet could be, could be made a, a greater distance.
Well, yeah, absolutely, yep, yep, you're sure of that.
I guess that's where I was going also and you know, that one, I think there is some movement and some thought that could be put into reducing that hardship. With respect to the coverage, that's gonna be hard to do. You, you've got a large deck though, it's three hundred and thirty-six square feet, which, you know, is pretty darn big. Uh, but I, I think that the code provision penalizes um, lots that conform. Um, if you were a non-conforming lot, a smaller lot, then this wouldn't apply. Because you're, if you're less than the requirements for the lot size, you don't have to meet the coverage, so I, I guess I support you being over the coverage for the small amount you are.
Um, okay.
I think that the drawings, you know, what's, the, the meeting to date is, or to this time is kinda needs to have the drawings be a clear, um, you know, we're.
Yeah, I can see where it's confusing for sure.
It's twenty minutes, we're trying to figure out what's.
Right, I, I see that, yeah, I can see why, I wish I, I should've came in, I should've came there.
You know, I think that you could, it'd be nice to have all of the information on one drawing, cause you know, there's other work to be done here, I believe. Um, and so if everything's on one drawing and we can see it all on one big picture, it'll help a lot too, so if you could get the drawing clearer and the whole overall, that would make a lot better.
Okay.
Then show the height, if you could show the height of it and show the materials, uh, what is the lower deck made of? Is it concrete or is it?
We were gonna do concrete, yes, that's what I was trying to say, that, see those little boxes that are drawn, those little boxes around the outside?
Yeah, I understand, I, I understand that now, but I didn't initially, you know.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Um, so on overall drawing.
I mean, we're not in a rush at this point, but we just wanted to bring it to your attention, um, to see if it was worth pursuing. So we can, uh, we can make this look a lot better for you.
Well, it's not up to this board on the variances, it's the zoning board, but we're just, you know, we, we need to comment on it. Um, you know, but I, I, again, it, it's a large conforming lot, so to be able to have a larger deck makes. Um, you know, but I, I, again, it, it's a large conforming lot, so to be able to have a larger deck makes sense to me. That's just my opinion. Thanks.
No, I know, I have no questions.
Uh, is, are the stairs gonna be attached to the deck, are they gonna be freestanding?
No, they'll be attached to the deck, I mean, they'll be, they'll be supporting themselves, but they will be attached to the deck.
Okay, thank you.
No, I just, is this the same house that they're putting an addition on?
Yes.
And again, it'd be nice to see all of that together, so we can kind of. You know, have a record of what was supposed to be done.
Okay. So on that last page, we can show you where the. The new foundation that we put in and then show you where the deck's gonna go, so it probably looks a little more clear. That you're just seeing it from the one page.
Right.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll do that.
I looked at your picture. And I assume that your second floor deck was attached to the house.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, that's right, right, yeah, I, I see what you're saying, yeah, I think that's as a picture to show you what he's looking to do. Um, and, and I think that's, that's just like this, kinda show you what he's looking to do, but it doesn't have a, it doesn't have another cover on top, so. Um, sorry for that.
Um, just. The whole area.
Yeah, to me, I.
It's not a design I would. Go for, um, does he really have a need for that shed?
Um, they don't have a lot of, uh, in the basement, they, it's a crawl space and they only got like a little entrance on the side, so he doesn't have a lot of storage. And that's one of the reasons why they did the, uh, the additions that we did. Is because they needed space and then, you know, we built the little garages there, which are not as big as they wanted them, but. Um, they, they, they're gonna work. And then upstairs, we have a little bonus room over the garage to store stuff in, because they, they really don't have storage in this house. Um, so. If we gotta move that shed away from that, uh, west line and. Put it somewhere else on the property that conforms, then that, that would be something to look into for sure.
I mean, eliminating. The deck on the west side of the house. You know, so you got plenty of room. For that shed to be moved.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like if we gotta move it to the south and then. You see where that, uh. It says like one ten or something, one ten, a hundred and ten inches or something, maybe if we slid it over there. Out of the way, I mean, and push it closer to the existing home, I mean, we could probably set it right there or out of the way. To get it out of the variance that we need on that side. But I'd have to ask Mr. Gilbert if that's something he'd be interested in.
Well, here's my thought, okay, is. You move the shed to the south. You turn it around so the door's facing north. You still wanna, I, it looks to me like they wanna have access to the shed. Underneath or off the lower patio. So set it up that way. And, and run it north and south, you still are gonna have. Probably fifteen. Feet, uh, maybe even.
Because right now that's six points, six point nine, is that what I read right there, I. I can't see that really.
Five point six.
Six point nine plus the shed itself, yeah.
Just rotate the whole thing counterclockwise, and.
Okay.
It accomplishes what they wanna do. And maybe makes it easier for us in planning or zoning to. Give our blessing.
Okay.
Matt, just for. Just for planning purposes, I gotta be eight feet off the primary structure or attached if you do move that shed.
Okay, I think, well, I think we have that, I think we have that.
In twelve and a half.
Almost where that landing, yeah, almost where that landing is, I think if we could put it there. Then that might be, that'd be bad then, okay, well, we'll talk to Rick and see. Where, if he's okay with moving it there and, and we'll see how that works.
So this is just a freestanding?
Yeah. Yeah.
Structure.
Freestanding.
Yeah.
This, the shed you mean?
Yeah, well, the whole project.
The whole concept, the whole, the deck, the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna, the deck's gonna be permanent, cause it will be mounted to that, uh, concrete slab.
But it is second floor.
Yeah, well, yeah, the second floor goes up those stairs off that, uh, original deck.
Just, just this portion of the second floor.
Yeah, yep, and it's not covered.
There needs a.
There's a patio down there.
Like, I've seen two-story.
It's a two-story, yeah, yeah, okay. It's in.
Okay, are there any questions, would somebody make a note, uh, as far as recommending or not recommending to zoning?
Did you do public comment for it, Bruce, sorry to interrupt you?
I thought, you're right, I did. Okay. We have, uh. Couple people on Zoom, uh. Ms. Wood, would you like to comment?
No, I do not.
Uh. E Cor. Uh. Sorry, I thought. Wanna comment or mute yourself, please? All right. So we'll close public comment. We had nobody. In the audience today, so. All right. May I have most of the one word together, please?
Well, and, and you can hack this one up any way you want. Uh, I would recommend, uh. That we. Prefer to zoning. With the commentary that our recommendation. Is for the homeowner to reevaluate the positioning of this project. In such a way that would bring it into compliance with zoning. And maybe, uh. Align it. North and south versus east and west.
Let's look at that.
Yeah, second. Mr. Chandler, how do you know?
I'll prove that.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. McKeen?
Yes.
Bobby Cooper?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay, it'll be set to zoning, uh, Kevin. Correctly, if I'm wrong, but they won't meet until the twenty-second, is that correct?
No, I'm doing Tuesday, what's Monday, the eighth, I'm doing Tuesday, the ninth, I have time to amend that, uh, notice and put it on for the ninth.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In your recommendation. Are you considering the coverage issue?
No, we did not.
Do you want, um. Do you want me to put anything in there, does the board want me to put anything in there when I communicate to zoning that you're? Uh, so I have your, I have what Linda's gonna send me, do you want me to put anything in there about the coverage to zoning? I can put it in just as a com- uh, communication thing, like an, uh, member item or anything?
I, I think you could, you could add our, in our recommendation that we, we don't view the. It, uh, the current proposed coverage. Variance as significant. And. That we would, um. That it may, to the extent that it may even go down and become compliant with the revisions that are being proposed. We wouldn't obviously object to that, uh, so. Yeah.
The revisions with the shed being moved, right?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, okay, I mean, that's simple, I mean, if we, if we can make it, uh, move and, and make it work, you know, for him to wanna do this, then. Then we can move forward.
We, we can, uh, talk with zoning, uh. They're the ones that'll make that decision.
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, you have a good evening.
You guys too.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. Ms. Wood, would you like to present your project, please?
Sure, sure, um, I am the owner of eighty-four twenty-nine Sil Shore Road. Uh, we'd like to put a dock in, uh, property currently has no dock, that particular property, um. And, um. It's a. It's a forty foot by four foot dock.
Pardon me, uh, Matthew, mute yourself, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, and, um, you know, fair, fairly standard, uh, you know, sort of request here, um. It's, uh, pretty, pretty simple, it'll be at the height of the wall, um, to enable handicap access and, um. You know, it's pretty, um, pretty simple, clear cut.
No.
Pardon me?
What we received isn't, uh, that clear. Clear is.
In what regard?
Well. The placement of the dock, the lateral, uh, boundaries on the two lots, have you merged those two lots?
No, no.
Well, then. That's something you have to take in consideration, because we can't allow. One dock across. On other properties.
Yeah, no, there's, there's no intention of that, um, and Kevin and I have discussed that at great length. Um, so, you know, I don't think that'll be an issue, um. And, uh, there was a prior dock there that was temporary about five years ago. So it's not the first time there's been a dock on that property extending out that direction. About that size.
I understand, uh, you. Kevin has requested you to have a survey done. And show in those boundaries. So that we can determine the placement.
Yeah, I'm still waiting from, for Kevin to, you know, he, he had some, uh, names and, uh. Phone numbers of, uh, surveyors and, uh, I'm still waiting for that, so yeah, that's the intent, correct.
So. So. My opinion is until we. Have that survey, there's not much we can do. Uh, we will need a. Real site plan, there is no site plan attached to this. Uh, site plan, we need to include. The placement of the dock, uh, where the neighbors' docks are. Shoulder line structures, existing dock list, the break wall. Um. It should also, like the survey shows, the lateral lines. Of both properties. And. By that time, a, uh, proposed location of the new dock. And we would. Like that, uh. Also with a short form seeker. Uh, the seeker is an environmental impact. Uh, forum that Kevin has, uh, if you're not familiar with it, he could, uh, explain it to you and.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that have been the, the purview of the D E C, wouldn't, wouldn't they have taken that in, into consideration?
No.
It's a separate process.
Okay.
Okay. So. Uh, board members, questions, comments?
Um, yeah, just one, uh. Christina. Um, on this map that we have, it says owner owns this property as well. Is that? Is that the property to the east?
Yeah, the house.
The new?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not a new house, it's, it's fifteen years old.
It's pretty, it's new by most standards.
It'd be new to me. Okay, so that's your property as well.
House was, house was built in the oh-six, oh-seven.
Right. Okay.
Still looks brand new, Christina.
Well, I'm, I'm pleased that you, that you think so.
All right. And, and then there's that old boathouse.
Right, that's, that's, uh, to the west, correct.
That's, but that's the neighbor's boathouse, am I correct on that?
You are correct.
Okay. Yeah, so. The. I recall the old dock that was there, um. It was, it was a removable dock, right?
Yeah, it's gone now, there's no dock. You have a dock now, right?
At eighty-four thirty-three, I do, yes.
Right.
The seasonal dock is gone.
Question, yes.
Yeah, the seasonal dock, seasonal dock belonged to the prior owner.
But the boathouse you're referring to, Bill, to the west, that's on the adjacent property, that's on. Thirty. Thirty-three or whatever.
Well, then I got all mixed up there.
It's actually twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, thank you.
Twenty-nine, it's twenty-nine and then twenty-seven.
Yeah, the numbers go down, great, thank you.
What, what are the two addresses?
Of which things?
Of the two properties you own there.
Well, I own three.
Oh.
Yeah, I own eighty-four forty-seven, I own eighty-four twenty-nine, and I own eighty-four forty-three.
Forty-three.
Sorry, sorry, excuse me, that's eighty-four thirty-three.
Thirty-three, right, yeah. And eighty-four thirty-three is the one with the house that we were talking about. And that, but this is.
Who owns the house that looks like a ship? The front of it.
Uh, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't.
The bow of a ship.
I don't know a house with a shed, um, there, there's a boathouse.
No, if you, if you look at it from the bay, it's. Yeah, it's designed to be the bow of a ship.
Yes, well, that's the boathouse of, of the cruise property, which I believe is eighty-four twenty-seven.
Okay, so this is not the cruise property.
What is not? No, this is, this is owned by the Wood Brucker Trust. All three properties are.
And here we. Uh. Spokesperson for this trust.
Are you the trustee of that trust, Christina?
I am, there are two trustees, Brucker and Wood.
Okay.
I'm Wood.
Do we need permission from both trustees?
Well, that, that's, that's, yeah, well, look, I, I don't think that's an issue. It's, it is, you're, you're welcome, if you wanna form, I'm happy to have it notarized, you know.
We've required this on other trusts.
Well, that, that's just, that's just fine, it's a real estate trust, that's all it is, we own all of our properties in, in a real estate trust.
There's quite a few people who've done that.
Pardon?
There's quite a few people who have their land in trust, yes.
The, the issue.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to get a signature from the other trustee, if, if that's an issue, that's not an issue on, on the trustee's side.
That's good.
Yeah, the issue is just that if it's, if it's in any control of the trust and the trust requires. Both parties to. To make the request, then we should be compliant with that.
Understood.
Yeah. Uh, so, probably picking up where you were headed, Bill, is it your intention to keep these two properties separate, Christina? To not merge them?
Correct.
Okay. And do you know offhand? What the proximity of the existing dock is to the property line between twenty-nine and thirty-three?
Yeah, it's, um, you know, roughly ten to twelve feet, you know, it's, um, we went through a similar approval, uh, a decade ago.
Okay, so it is, it is ten or twelve feet off the property.
Absolutely, yes.
Correct, okay.
And it went through a survey process as well, it's, you know. Same thing.
One of the things that we'll need on that site plan to show. The location of all. The location of all of that.
Yeah, because that shoreline's not straight there. It's. Those lines, right?
We need the lateral lines. On the survey and on the site plan, so. You know, especially since the uh, properties are not the one property. You know, going down the road. We let a dock, you know, fringe on the one.
Right.
You know, it got sold off and.
Right, in fact, it's carved off. It really needs to be freestanding if it's not your intention to, to put the two properties together.
Well, I'm just saying at this time, it's not my intention.
Yeah, no.
It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean if somebody ever to sell it, it wouldn't all be sold as one. But, you know. That, that I, I cannot predict at this time.
And the length that you want at forty feet?
Correct.
This is Mark. Um. The. There is on your sketch, from your sketch, a survey from McMahon and Larue that's. Back in eighty-eight, but. You know, that could certainly uh, be updated with a drive-by and probably save you time and money. If you were to use those surveyors and. That would. Get it done for you quicker.
That's a good idea. Thanks, Mark.
Any further questions? I would like to table this until we have the survey. And a site plan. And at that time, if everything. Is um. In order. We might possibly be able to. Fast track it. I can make that motion or one of you will.
I'll second it.
Okay. So we'll table this and so we have the surveys with the lateral lines. Uh, site plan with the placement. Of the neighbors. Dock, shoreline structures, existing dock, lift, great wall. Property uh, lines both properties, both locations of the new. Dock and lifts. And I'll give that list to uh, Kevin tomorrow, so. Want to pick it up from him.
And a short form seeker.
Yes, a short form seeker will have to be done. You can pick that up from Kevin too. All right.
All right, thank you.
We gotta vote.
You have to vote.
I vote yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
I agree.
I agree. Okay, it's you can have this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you. Bye.
We'll play it again. Thank you.
Mark, thank you.
Yep.
Well. Very good.
My daughters and my wife are very happy, because they got to go out without me to the oyster bar, which is the very best place around.
Oh, geez.
You're happy to go without you? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think so. For some reason, they, they thought a girls' night out was just perfect.
Maybe you can catch up later.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mark.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Well, he couldn't vote. Okay, I, I always like a motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Have a good night, guys.
Well, it's deceptive, because.